Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Ginkhar City Council's study session of Thursday, August 3rd, 2023. The time is 3:01 PM. And I will do a little call. Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Storset is excused today. Councilmember Rosenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Lichten?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
And Councilmember Barber?
Here.
Okay, great. Um, we will go right into our discussion items. We have a very full agenda. I'm just a reminder, thank you to the public that's joining us. Thank you to the public online that is joining us as well. Um, just a reminder that public comment is not taken at study sessions, but you can speak to us after the meeting or shoot us an email, just write down your questions. And we'll just go ahead and get right started. So our first item is introduction of our historic preservation commission appointees. Uh, we have two that are joining us today. And I think they're... I don't know. If you would like to go first, just say it and say your name and all a bit about yourself.
Hi, I'm Eleanor Schroeder, and I'm honored, thank you very much, to be chosen for this position. I come from a family where we believed in community service. And I also come from a commercial real estate background. And as I mentioned in the interview, so the two buildings that you would recognize, in which I was involved, are Lake Union Stadium and Smith Tower in Seattle. And so both of those had a lot of community input, a lot of community input. They even went on after the permits were issued because some people didn't like what was decided. So, um, it's, it's an interesting, it's an interesting area. I've always been interested in history. And so I look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. And you?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Lucian Doogie. Uh, and again, as, as was noted, it's an honor to be appointed to this, this commission. Thank you so much. My background's a little different. I have lived in Ginkharbor full-time now for just a little over two years. Prior to that, I was a professor at Georgia Tech, so I was living in Atlanta for 15 years, in California. Uh, before that, at the University of Pacific. My real estate experience, I practiced law for 11 years before I left the practice to go to something more civilized academia. Uh, but I did practice real estate law for 11 years in Denver, which is my hometown. Uh, also taught real estate law, uh, at Georgia Tech and at the University of the Pacific. And this is, I think, just a wonderful opportunity to give back to my new hometown. We're delighted to be here and also a love of history as well, because I was a history major as an undergraduate. And if you come to my house and see my photos of places I've visited, not a lot of photos of people, photos of buildings everywhere. So in any event, thank you so much. It's an honor.
Thank you so much. And Libby Norris could not join us today. She is at a work, a work event. But she wanted to express her thanks as well, and so you'll get to meet her soon. So thank you both as well. Thank you again for being here. Um, okay, so we'll go straight into our second discussion item, which is the flag display policy. And this report will be from our city administrator, Katrina Kudson.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to note that this was at the request of a council member.
Yes.
And so I didn't know if Councilmember Lichten would like to, uh, speak first, or I, my remarks would go first.
No, you go ahead. I'm fine.
Okay, so as with any project that we're pushing, uh, getting to go forward, policy or capital project, there are a couple of items as we're looking to execute this that we wanted council to be made aware of today. Um, just to quickly discuss history, council provided us direction at the last council study session to, um, look at flying the Pualu tribal flag as well as pride flag underneath our existing flag pole out front of City Hall, uh, under the American flag, um, as such, the, along with other amendments to that code. Subsequent to that, and as the city clerk was drafting that, there was some council questions about a second flag pole and some discussion, I believe amongst council, that necessitated coming back here to ensure that that's the ordinance that we wanted to put forward. Um, I will note that there appears to be some, I won't say significant confusion, but there is confusion within the community because we don't have an ordinance published. So it seems the community is confused as to what the council desires for the flag policy. Fielded two calls today with folks saying, asking why we're flying the pride flag all year long and putting flags on all of our light poles. So, um, to say that the rumor mill is alive on this one would potentially be an understatement. Um, with that being said, we desire to put out accurate information on what the council is considering within ordinance. Um, and so we're hoping today to talk about some specifics about council, what council would like to see in that ordinance so that we can adequately put it together, um, notice the public on what is actually the recommendation, and then let them know when they have time to comment on that. Uh, with that, I will note that in order to meet the August 14th deadline, we need to publish tomorrow. So we would need to have everything buttoned down of what council's desiring, um, in, uh, in that ordinance tomorrow in order to publish it in time for the August 14th council meeting. Um, I say that because it is a time constraint that we need to be aware of. And if council does, um, provide different directions today on amounts of flag poles or provide direction to further collaborate with the Pualu tribe on what would be acceptable to them in flying that flag, that time, that will take time to collaborate with the tribe. Uh, that being said, this is all very typical. So in terms of process, again, we're looking at a policy. And so we're going down checking, um, all of those boxes. In terms of that, um, I had at least talked with one council member who was discussing a potential for a second pole out front of the council chambers. Jeff and I have been quickly coming up to speed on flag etiquette and flag of policy. And we do know that we could have a second flag pole out front, that the American flag would always need to be flown, um, out to the left as you're looking at any civic building, um, that nation flags or flags of, um, the tribe would need to be flown at the same level as the American flag. So if we were to have two flag poles out front, the American flag would need to be always on the left with the other flag pole on the right with, if, for instance, we're flying Norway's flag. If the ambassador for Norway was here, it would need to fly at the same height as the American flag, because nation flags fly at the same level. Any other flag would need to fly underneath the American flag in terms of, um, hierarchy and, um, priority. So, um, speaking with Jeff, if council does desire to have a second flag pole, that is something that we could definitely accommodate prior to next June, which I believe was council's desire. Um, we would, it's something that we are requesting direction on today because it is different from the previous direction that was given, and the ordinance would need to change. We would also note that it would be an additional cost and time of staff. But that being said, it is definitely doable for next June. Um, something that happened very recently that was not known at the time that this agenda went out is, um, a discussion with our judge that, um, just happened recently. She is, again, the CEO, if you will, of the judicial branch of our government. And this city hall is a courthouse on Wednesdays and some Thursdays, either for civil court or for traffic court. She expressed a desire to be able to review and comment what the council is proposing prior to, uh, it going to a public hearing. She also indicated that her desire that no flags be on the dais other than the American flag or the Washington state flag is as it is the different RCW, um, and state law within courthouses. So she wants to be able to review the requirement for flags on the dais as well as outside so she can determine, again, under her separate and equal branch of government, um, what would be flown at her courthouse. Um, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but she did say that it needs to be the American flag and the Washington state flag on the dais when she is there, um, and that she felt very strongly about that. So with that being said, she requested that whatever council decides that staff, this administration is able to talk with her, tell her what that proposal is, and then she would like to come back to council and be able to speak with you at a future work session if there is disagreement among council's desires and her wishes, um, as the judge. So I passed that along to council for her information. Speaking with the court administrator this afternoon, as this is, again, late breaking news here, um, the judge is, would we could make her available at a Wednesday, or sorry, Thursday work session coming up? She does have court in Milton on Thursdays, but she would, um, be able to make it back here in the afternoon to speak with you about, um, that proposal. Um, additionally, since the last meeting, there's been a number of questions from council on what the federal and state requirements for flags are as we're potentially considering a second flag pole. I will say that there are a lot of different laws and rules, um, that I am absolutely not an expert in, but Daniel and Josh and Jeff, I believe, are now. And so, um, again, with the number of flag poles, absolutely, we can figure it out, um, what council wants to do. However, the, um, so there has been a desire for a full, potentially memo from legal on what the requirements are, and we can provide that to you, um, from Daniel on this needs to be here, this many distance apart. These are the flags that need to fly below, all of those, um, types of things. So that's something we can do if council still desires that. In addition, there's been a discussion about some legal cases, one that was decided by the Supreme Court in 2022. Can't remember the first, uh, the plaintiff, but it was against the city of Boston. Chits. Um, and so Daniel has, um, reviewed that and, uh, and there's an additional case that we just were made aware of today out of the state of Oregon that we will need to analyze or, and it's not whether we can do what you want, it's about what the mechanism, the proper mechanism for moving it forward. Um, whether it's a policy or a resolution or an ordinance, those things matter in terms of the case, uh, at least the case from Boston in 2022. So potentially, we would need to take this from an ordinance to a resolution, and we're working to figure that out. Daniel, although not today because of the timing, um, we would want to make available as soon as council would be available to have an executive session to discuss these legal cases with council. Again, it's not saying that you, for instance, couldn't do any of what you're currently proposing in the flag policy. It's the mechanisms on how and how that legal risk, um, would, uh, shift over to the city. And, uh, I won't really say more about that in public session, but we would want to talk about that with council in executive session as soon as you're able to bring you all together. Um, one other question is, um, although this is a flag policy and that is how we're, we're treating it, this is not a, um, a pride policy, and I know that there has been confusion of that in the community. This is a flag policy, and we're not just talking about the pride flag. We're also speaking about, uh, the POW flag as well as, um, the flags of our sister cities. And so I state that on the public record that that is truly what this is, and that's how we are treating this, um, as such. But in particular question to the pride flag, the question has come up, does the council desire to fly the pride flag or the progress pride flag, which is the one that is currently flying at most of the public institutions and private institutions that you see? And so that is something also that we would want to get clarification from council in this, um, policy is which, uh, flag, uh, pride flag or the progress pride flag that we want to fly? Because once, if we put pride flag in here and fly that, and it's not the progress pride flag, we would have to go back and amend the ordinance or the resolution in order to fly the progress pride flag if that was the true intent. So we're hoping that we can get direction on that prior to moving forward. Um, I also, I previously stated, but I'll state again, at the legal case, we can fly the flag. It is, um, considered under government speech, not, um, free speech of the flags that the council chooses to fly. It is, again, the mechanism by which, uh, we adopt this and pursue it. That is what we will want to talk with council about in executive session. Um, so from the council's previous direction, we heard that the goal was to have this flag policy, um, adopted and fly the pride flag by next June, and that is 100% doable. So what I'm saying is, there's a couple of things here that we need some additional time to figure out. We would like to meet in the executive session, um, to figure this out, uh, to have council answer the, be able to answer the questions that council members had from legal. Daniel is prepping on that, and he is looking at the Oregon case today that was just sent to us today so that he can be up to speed and be able to tell you that. But as soon as we have all of this direction from council, we would recommend that council allow us to coordinate with the judge as the third branch of government, um, and that was their request. So that's what we would request from council, uh, that we would be allowed to do that, schedule the, um, an executive session with you all, and then bring this forward with, as final recommended by council. Advertise that to the public in a clear, transparent way, that this is what the council, um, is looking at. This is the policy. So that we are getting away from the rumor mill of flying year-round, flying on our light poles, and really that we are flying, that the council is intending to fly the Pualu flag during two months as well as the pride flag during one month. Um, we've been fielding quite a few calls on that. So I, I just wanted to let the council know that there is quite a bit of confusion and our desire is to communicate clearly, um, and concisely on what that is and when people can comment to the council. Um, that concludes my, longer than I thought it was going to be, Shiel.
That's quite all right. So, so yeah, so we are asking council for this to potentially come to you in September instead of the August 14th meeting and then skipping the last meeting and then coming into September. We're requesting that this can come before you in September and give us time to get all of these things put together. Uh, Councilmember Wood?
Yes, you have a request, I believe, that I sent in, um, for, uh, according to our municipal code 2.040, which allows, uh, any elected individual to request something to be put on the agenda. I requested the, um, flag display policy for, um, August the 14th. So if the council would like to look at some other things, I am amenable to, uh, either withdrawing that request or mending that request. However, that needs to work.
Thank you. Our current proposal, we believe that we can get the executive session done as soon as possible. If we can get today what council desires, then we would be able to set that up and have that. Josh, what's the first meeting in September? Uh, September 11th, that we would package this and be able to communicate to the public for the September 11th meeting.
Councilmember Henderson?
Do you need guidance on us today, like second flag?
Well.
Start looking at that as a serious?
We would like to have direction from council today, both so that we can, uh, work with the tribe. If the, if the council desires to fly the tribal flag on, um, within those two months on a second pole, we would want to then communicate with tribal leadership that that is the desire, receive their blessing, um, as well as work with the judge so that we can sit down with her and let her know exactly what the council wants and give her an opportunity to talk to you as the legislative branch. And then also, uh, it would be desired for, um, if the council desires the pride flag versus the progress pride flag so that we can ensure that we're doing what council wants.
Councilmember Barber, did you have your hand?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Ryan?
So, one, thank you. That was a lot of information. I really appreciate that. So how I'm feeling about what you said was, is a few things, um, as I look at giving you direction that I felt important. It feels like we don't have completed staff work, and that's not a criticism for staff. That is learning about what it is we need to do here. And I am not an expert on flag policy either, even though I had to do a lot of that work in my former life. So I'd like to see completed staff work, required, uh, springing this forward to public input. And what I mean by that is taking a look at the current federal laws, the current state laws. What, as far as which pride flag is flown, I think that we should see what the state is recommending. There's also a commission that we could reach out to from the state of Wyoming, um, and ask them on that specific thing. In regards to the tribes, I would love to have their input as to would they like their flag flown here. And I think we talked October, remember, if I remember right, the flag being flown on the dais? So I would ask them, quite frankly, in respect for them. It's not, for me personally, it's not about me saying I need to have it. It's recognizing the indigenous people as we do in all of our meetings to do that. So that, that, that's where I'm coming from. I'd also like to understand, I look forward to the executive session. I think that's extremely important. And this is a flag policy. So whether or not we have one pole, two poles, three poles, I think the information from a statute standpoint, and perhaps these two lawsuits, and I don't know anything about them, might influence what it is we should or should not be doing. Um, and so I would recommend that we do not, uh, vote on August 14th, this ordinance, but that we definitely have some depth that we need to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Barber? Thank you. Um, just kind of adding on to what Councilmember Martin said. I think that it's important that we have all the information that we need from the statutes and that kind of thing, rather than setting a date. So I would rather that, instead of saying we will come back on September 14th, I think it was?
11.
11. That we make sure that we're not unduly stressing staff and that we're getting all the questions answered, and further, that this study session be one where everybody can be here. I know Councilmember Storset couldn't be here today. I think it's really important that we have the full complement of the group here for that discussion. So those are two things that I think might make that date move out a little bit.
Thank you. In response to that, we would just say that we understand that this is very important to some council members. And as you know, we had a request to bring it forward on the 14th. And so our desire in this is to show that it's not an obstructionist act, that rather we're wanting to get this done and we're committed to getting it done in a timely manner. And so that's why we want to commit to the 11th. If council desires additional time, that's fine. We just need to know what that is.
I'm, I'm fine with the 11th based on that, assuming that Councilmember Storset and the rest of us can all be here on that day. Great, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lichten?
Yes, thank you. Um, I appreciate all the comments, and I, um, agree with the prior comments made by my fellow council members. However long it is to do this the right way with the executive session and to take a thorough and comprehensive look at what the best practices are as well as the best policies. I agree, you know, we are not flag experts, so let's hear from the expert opinions of what's out there. And I don't necessarily say this needs to happen on September 11th. I say, you know, come to us with a proposal from the staff and say, this is what would work best with our timeline. You know, so long as it's not something that just gets keep putting off. Um, but so long as there's just this commitment, which I heard from our city administrator, that there was a commitment to do this. So I think just being open, transparent, having a good communication plan, taking in the feedback, all the things that were discussed are a great option. Um, and I support what the staff would recommend. And if it takes us time to put together a meeting with the judge, a meeting in executive session, everyone to be at a council meeting, then let's just do it the right way, and I'll be present and, and have the open dialogue. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Wood?
Thank you. I did speak with Jennifer Keating, and if we decide to have a second flag pole there, she feels that the Pualu tribe would support that and just let her know when we need the flag. Uh, I also think that if we make a meeting and not every council person should be here, that is up to that council person, and we should continue on with the agenda, uh, and we should not wait until we have a full complement of council members to discuss this. And since council, since our city administrator believes that she can get the information and all the meetings done by September the 11th, that's the date that, uh, I will be looking forward to, and I will put a request in for that date as well. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Martin? Just a clarifying question. This is how I heard it. It might not be how you meant it, Katrina. The judge, is it the judge's, I heard beliefs or point of view? Or is it the judge saying, I'm coming at it from the judicial branch? These are, um, the regulations from the judicial side on how flags can be flown in a courthouse?
The latter. And there's, there's regulations, and again, I am not a flag expert, so I asterisk this.
That's what I just wanted to make sure of.
Those, the, the RCW that I did look at today regarding courthouse flags, we, there cannot be anything in the vicinity of where the judge was unbiased and partial that shows partiality to any one group or any groups. And so that was her perspective. This was not her personal view. This was the, so thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Robert?
Yeah, my opinion is usually in the minority, especially on this subject. And I will withhold most of my comments until we do meet and have all that information, until it's smart. Maybe make a better decision. But just one thing to keep in mind that, uh, the reason that we decided to fly, uh, the Pualu flag on the dais was because we weren't sure that in October, which is when Indigenous Peoples' Day is, that that would happen to fall on Monday. So we decided to have it there the whole month of October. But we can certainly fly it, uh, on Indigenous Peoples' Day if that turns out to be the decision to have two flag poles. But, uh, let's not let it creep into being a whole month. And the reason we only did it on the dais is because we weren't going to have a council meeting there. So it just, so we don't get lost in why we did it again.
And we can talk to the tribe all the time.
Like I said, I'll withhold, uh, the majority of comments, uh, which I can give you heads up is, uh, in opposition to my, about everything that was said here so far.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson?
Um, so the comment about in the vicinity of the judge, maybe we'll, at some point, we can have our legal counsel maybe define that.
Daniel will be looking at that, and I, I just spoke with him after the meeting.
Yeah.
Just as this is sort of new, but he will be looking at those rules to be able to give council the legal view, noting that she is a separate branch of government. So you will know what the laws are and say.
Okay.
It's not very often that we do things that impact the court. And so I, I just want to take responsibility that I did not have the foresight to meet with her and talk with her about this. So I told her that as well, and I wanted to say that to you, and, um, I will not make that mistake here.
Um, so we do desire a consensus of council today about the second flag pole, correct? So we can move forward with site plan amendment and whatever else?
Yeah.
So by, by, I mean, this is not an official vote, but by us showing who is supportive of installing a second pole? One, two, three?
So not supportive of it, but just to question, I'm sorry, do we really need to answer that based on the fact that we're waiting for some additional rules or regulation?
That's kind of what I'm wondering too.
Well, we do know that the Pualu tribe would not want us to fly their flag on the same pole as ours. So if the council desires to fly that flag or any other flag?
Not nation's flag.
Uh, any other nation's flag, we would need a second flag pole.
I'm in favor of one flag pole, but if that's a problem, then I'd go for two.
Well, there's one out there currently.
Yes, and that's what I'm afraid I'm in favor of. But if, if the rest of council wants to go for two.
I think I'd like to wait personally, if we can, if it's all possible, to wait till we get the coordinates, and that should be part of it.
Okay, so if we're, what we can do is in working with the tribe, and I believe that they're going to say they would like a second flag or have it be flown on a second pole.
They've already said that, that they don't want it on the same one. So, yeah, they, so they have told us that they cannot, uh, fly their flag on one pole underneath another flag. They don't care whether we have a second pole or not, or whether we fly their flag on a second pole or not. We have already, we already have an ordinance stating when we're going to have that, that's passed already, that's legal, that their flag will be on the dais during October and November. Um, so I just simply was talking to Jennifer about some other things, and I said, you know, how would you tell if we had a second pole? It's up to us whether or not, they're not pushing for a second pole, but, but if we have one, and, and if we like for them to, to ask them if they like to have their flag flown, yes, they, they'd be happy to do it then. But they're not pushing for a second pole.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. In my conversations with Jennifer as well, she said basically that they appreciate that the council has it at the dais when they do. And that if the council desires to fly it outside, it could not be lower than the, our flag or underneath it. So therefore, that would necessitate a second pole, if council desires to fly that outside.
Um, I don't know which one was first. I think council member, let me look at my word. Uh, Councilmember Barber?
Okay. Um, just something, this is probably for Jeff to consider is, uh, in talking about this with other people, they suggested looking possibly at the maritime flag, that the single, the mast that has then a horizontal bar across it. that the single, the mast that has then a horizontal bar across it. I don't know if that's an option. It's just something to consider or can you have thoughts on that right now too? But that avoids the second flag pole, but maybe give us an option, not for P'w, but.
What do you mean avoids? How does that avoid the second flag?
Because we would have one flag pole that you can have three flags flying from.
Oh, you mean like where it has the.
The crossbar.
Okay.
But, and as you alluded to, it means that you cannot have another nation's flag.
Right.
Yes. We, we can look at that as an option, possibly modify or I don't know if that would be allowed because you're in the additional role of the foundation.
What I'm hearing from Councilmember Martin, and I think it does make sense too, is potentially you take council, take council direction after the work sessions, or not after the work session, after the executive session. So we go into executive session with direction to be given to staff after coming back in to open. Is that?
Sounds, yeah. Councilmember Henderson?
Well, I had a comment though. I mean, when we say go ahead with the second flag pole, you want guidance on that, what did that exactly mean? That Jeff would then figure out or one of his engineers would determine what it would cost to put one in? Because if that's, if that's what it is, it doesn't, it doesn't commit us to anything. And it does save time versus if we come back on the eleventh and we say, "Yeah, we'd like another flag pole," then he's got to start from there on.
Jeff and his team are already looking at what that would look like based on what we're, the second flag pole guidance that we now know is out there. But I think what Housemember Martin was saying or, or alluding to was that direction potentially be given to staff after the executive session with legal.
Yeah.
And, and I think that would be fine. We would just proceed forward that way. And then after council receives direction, then we would communicate out the specifics to the public of what the ordinance, what is the contents of the ordinance or resolution.
So that wouldn't necessarily stop Jeff from coming up with the cost of it, even if it's a back of the envelope.
Right. He's already looking at it.
All right. That's all I need.
Councilmember Anderson?
I think we didn't talk about it yet, but just another data point is when we were first discussing flags worthy of hanging, we talked about hanging those particular flags in our city parks and other city properties. So if we have, if it were to turn out to be two flag poles, still leaves the idea of what we're going to do with parks and the better it's part of, so just something to throw in the mix when we're trying to come up with all.
And I think that's where part of the confusion and the community is coming from. That what's currently drafted that is out there for the public to see only includes our civic center flag pole and the dais. There are no other, there are no park flag poles in there. There's no, there. What is in there is where the American flag will fly and where the state flag and the POW MIA flag will fly. Like those are mentioned for parks, but the pride flag and the P'w tribe flag are only listed for the civic center.
They may have gotten the idea because in our max work session, we had to, we discussed that.
Yes, it was, it was discussed. Yes.
If they listened to that, but didn't read the ordinance, that's a camera. So it is like they pulled out.
Yeah.
There.
And we, we agree, you know, the benefit of these work sessions is that we're able to discuss things and, you know, for council to share ideas, we want to be able to communicate what the outcome is. So that we can kind of combat some of the misinformation.
Okay, I think we have what we need, right?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll proceed sending out invites, obviously we need to get Daniel's availability. And then we'll send out a calendar, see when you guys are available and get that as soon as possible.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our third discussion item. This is about Pierce County Fire District number five, water utility extension agreement. And this report comes just from our associate engineer, Stephanie Siebel. Thanks for being here.
Hi, everybody. Yes, Pierce County Fire District five is looking at, it's a true. When they were initially built out there, Fire Station fifty-eight and their training center, there was no one available to serve them fire for the water. So we have our water makes and others currently serve them required. They're now coming back and doing expansion on a training center and fifty-eight. And they are requesting that they receive domestic water from the city for the parcel that's highlighted right up on the screen. Because Washington Water does not have the capacity to serve them domestic water. And they're currently on a well and the well does not have the capacity to serve their expansion also. So they would be disconnecting that parcel from their well to connect to ours. This is a very difficult one. In the future, they may request to do this, the ones that's a light company in yellow, but we will bring that back at a certain other time if they decide to do that. But right now, we have discussed with the county of moving that parcel into our water service district because it is outside the UGA, which is what we normally do for water extension agreements. And they're okay with that because we already served them enough water. And that was the trigger that was along with this. So, um, right now we're asking council to basically give staff direction to go to resolution for this water extension agreement that the council made.
I was not even looking. So I'm going to start on the left. I was hoping to see on the left.
Oh, okay. Well, I think they're all pointing at you. So Councilmember Barber, you're going to speak first and then I. Okay, hopefully I have a really simple question. I don't see a downside to this.
There really isn't. They'll pay for everything, for the connection and their fees are going to be one and a half times just like our normal rates for the UGA. There really isn't a downside to it.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Councilmember Martin? Oh, no, I didn't. You didn't? I'm sorry. I wrote it down for you, but I meant to say wrote it.
My question was answered. It was going to be, who's going to pay for all that? But it was.
And the main is already there.
So all they're asking for is, I agree, I'll have to do that. The right to connect.
Uh, Councilmember Henderson?
I think, Councilmember Wood, Jenny's ahead of me.
Thank you. Capacity for, from the city, what's our capacity in order to supply water to them for their purposes?
We have plenty of capacity. They're only asking for one ERU. And we have plenty of capacity. We monitor that all along when we get any application for water.
Thank you. That's my question.
Okay, Councilmember Henderson?
So back to their flow rates, the ERU, that's, my assumption is they're going to be using that water just for internally use, not for like putting out. I, there, I think on that property right, unless I'm wrong, they're building their fire suppression structure. Is this, is this water going to be used for that, like a huge sprinkler system? I just want to make sure that we know what their flow rate is because we may think, well, we got plenty of water for one ERU, but all of a sudden they got to turn on their sprinkler system because they're trying to vassal fire in their training facility.
They're not going to have a sprinkler system in the training.
Okay, yeah.
Because it would turn on too often. He don't told me yesterday, so.
That word is also coming from the fire floor that we're there.
Yeah, it's already.
Oh, okay. So they can, so they have another system. All right.
They already have a fire system, moved with fire hydrants on site on both parcels.
Okay.
That's what that word will be.
All right.
This will only be for Fire Station fifty-eight and they're going to have any administration building for the training center. So it'll only be serving like bathrooms.
Kind of sort of domestic type.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I can't see Councilmember Liggins anymore. I have no per hand possession. I wanted to make sure if it was that I was able to, okay, I don't see you for hand. So, okay, great. Thank you, council. We'll move forward with this. So thank you, Stephanie, for being here. Thanks, Jeff, too.
Tiffany Keating, wherever you want to go, I'll click on attendees so those of us can see who's in the.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Oh, you're, yes, you got it.
I do.
Okay. So this is for Harbor Run Black Sewer Utility Extension Agreement and Stephanie Siebel, take it away.
Okay, so back on June twelfth, we brought you Resolution twelve eighty-two for Ways Water Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the Harbor Run Flap that gave out on Peacock Hill, one hundred and eight. And they, that was approved. So now they're back for their sewer extension agreement for sixteen ERUs for the sixteen lot that they're proposing doing. This has already been modeled and everything, with their Ways Water Comprehensive Plan Amendment, that there is capacity to add them to our system. And they will be connecting into Basin Three, a call away where that black circle is upon the map. And again, just like on the other one, they will be paying all the costs to design and construct this extension. And their rates will be at the one and a half times of the city rates. Pretty straightforward. And we do have the capacity in this.
Dang.
Good try. So, that's just some other question ahead of me. Section four says the owner, actually, we, the city reserves the right to give them sixteen ERUs of capacity. If somebody want to build an EDU at some point, because that's in Pierce County, if they wanted to do that, wouldn't that not kill them out because of the sixteen ERU restriction or?
Technically, they'd have to have an utility extension for additional ERU requests.
Right. But it's something that could be done if that was the case.
It's also seen. Just outside.
It's a little hobbled. Very weird.
Yeah. It's confusing for a lot of people. Any other questions from council? You all good with moving forward with this? Okay. I think everyone's good going. Great. Thank you so much. Okay, last one here, Eme. All right. Um, moving on to our fifth item, I can't believe it's going so fast. This is amazing, don't you? I know, knocking on all the, but it was very funny. We will move on to our short-term rental update. And this report will come to us from our community development director, Carl DeCimas. And then I also see our city planner, Jeremy Hammer, is here as well. So I think you may be talking to me, maybe Carl, or are you starting your report? Just you? I saw Carl on and, and his camera was on, so I wasn't sure.
Can you, can you hear me, mayor? I am here.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, tha- thank you. Thank you very much and good afternoon, council. So I, I, I am turning this over to Jeremy Hammer, but because I'm here, I thought I would just say hello. And let you know that Jeremy has been doing just a really, an amazing job with the short-term rentals and monitoring them. I've sort of turned the whole program over to him to handle and he's been processing a lot of the permits, so it makes a lot of sense. With the new Granicus information that we've received, which has been just fantastic. And we wanted to, you know, thank you for giving us that tool to be able to monitor these and kind of get to the, the real root of the matter here. And I think you'll, you'll find that the data has, has been very useful. And, and with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Jeremy to, to give you the, the, the meat of the, of the issue here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. So to start, since the adoption of ordinance fifteen oh seven, March eighth, we have twenty-six applications in, twelve which have been issued to date. Two are current in ERU, two are incomplete. So those are ones that are waiting for payment of fees. One is waiting for revision, one has expired and one withdrawn. So initially we received about fifteen permits in the first few weeks and then it has slowed down since then. Today, we have one violation, or one code compliance case related to a short-term rental that has come in. So a little more about that. One file, it was resolved through and approved STR permit. During the time since the ordinance was approved, we've had inquiries about short-term rentals and potential code enforcement, but only one has followed through with a compliance request. We've added a link to the short-term rental webpage for code compliance in case there's any disconnect there, if people weren't finding it, if needed.
Jeremy, sorry. What's CCR? CCAR for compliance?
Compliance actually request.
Okay.
Should have explained that acronym. So currently, from Granicus, there is currently thirty-five advertised short-term rentals. So initially, we received a number of fifty to sixty, fifty to seventy, something in that range. So once we subtracted those that weren't in the city, ones that weren't short-term rentals, ones that were not active, that's the number we have now. So they've noted that seventy-four percent of all listings have been verified. So those are ones where they have been able to identify the address with some sort of proof. And it all comes from publicly available data, so real estate listings, photos, online, things like that. The next portions are estimates from Granicus and a little bit of background for how those are done. So they will take verified stays. So that comes from reviews that are left on the listings. Since to leave a review, you need to have stayed there. And then, so they have a certain amount of confirmed stays, or just older reviews left. And then with that figure, they're able to estimate a low end, mid, high end for stays and revenue. So the average estimated revenue, twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-two, and that's for the last year. So it'd be third and fourth quarter of twenty twenty-two and first and second quarter of this year. And then the average occupied nights, sixty-six. And so that's four of those thirty-five. It's important to note that of those thirty-five, there were ten that did not have documented stays. So they're either inactive or not yet active. So active. And of those, the average revenue of the twenty-five active, seventeen thousand five hundred approximately for the last year and ninety-nine for the average stays in the last year. And interestingly enough, there were nine listings that had over a hundred, so it was very top-heavy. So there are a few with very few nights. The final one point on there is there are nineteen with documented stays in the last month. So out of thirty-five, that's a little bit over half. And previously mentioned, we had nineteen permits. Those are not the same nineteen, they just only have permits. So that leads us to this next one. So we were able to use the data from Granicus to send out nine enforcement letters and just notices that either they're operating without a business license, operating without a permit, or both. And we noted a fifteen-day deadline to either renew permit or apply for permit, renew business license, or apply for business license. And with those letters, we've already received two responses from property owners who indicated that their short-term rentals were no longer operating and those two removed their listings. So that brings up number of thirty-five down to thirty-three. And then additionally, from Granicus' data, there are two more that have not had a documented stay last year. So we're potentially looking at thirty-one.
So, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, the thirty, let's, the thirty-one or thirty-three is the, the twenty-six plus five to seven, or it says a different?
There's the thirty-five that we identified as showing listings, subtracting the two that are no longer operating, they're removing the listings.
Is thirty-three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thirty-one would be the additional two that haven't had a, a. Thirty-one would be the additional two that haven't had a documented stay within the last year.
So are we saying then that there are seven that have not complied?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wood?
Yes, thank you. It would have been nice to have this ahead of time, so I could have looked this over and come back with better questions. But the twelve thousand revenue that we're talking about, is that estimated revenue that we think is coming to the city, or is that estimated revenue for them?
That is estimated revenue for the operator.
Now, as I understand, we don't have any way of knowing how much revenue would come to the city from that. Am I correct in that?
As far as we understand, it comes, the lodging tax comes as a lump sum.
Yeah.
It doesn't separate out hotels, motels from short-term rentals.
Right, right, all right, thank you. Are you happy with Granicus?
They've been good so far.
Good, good.
Took, took a bit to get.
How often do they check around to see if, if there are any folks advertising that are not on our list of approved, permitted?
I think every three to five days.
Oh, wow.
So it's updated pretty frequently.
All right, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Henderson?
Thank you. When we passed this ordinance, we kind of estimated a cost to city staff to process these permits. Do we, based on what you've done now so far, it's been since March, you feel like that was sufficient, not enough, just right? Is to go left, go the left amount, or?
Can you explain that to that question a little more?
Yeah, we, we had a permit processing fee that we're charging, right? And that was supposed to extensively cover staff time to process permits. Maybe nobody's got any data on that, whether you're taking six days for each permit, which is way over six hundred, or six hours or six minutes. Maybe to say how, how much time you actually spend processing any permit, that might give an idea.
Yeah, we haven't really been tracking that very closely. There have been some of them very quick to process, I know those that have, but we haven't been tracking that. Not as soon as maybe we should have.
All right, so it sounds like it's all right.
It's something, I think, I know Carl's here, but we can't see.
Can you still hear us, Carl?
I think that's a really good question, and that we'll want to look at the metric of are we?
Yeah.
Is our, is our deed adequate for what the time is after, right? So just to note, we can't see you here, Carl, but I can see you on Jeremy's screen, so the public can maybe see you.
I can see myself.
Okay.
I would say, I, I would, I would offer on that point, and I think it's a very good point, Councilman Henderson, we, and we certainly could start to collect some of that data. But, you know, having talked, talking with staff, from what I'm understanding anyway, the, as Jeremy said, the reviews have gone pretty smoothly on our side, it's pretty quick. We're either able to approve and get that out the door very quickly, or if we need more information, it's back to the applicant, and the, and the delay is on the applicant's side. So I would say likely more of the time spent on staff's side is, is less on review probably, and more on collecting the data that Jeremy is providing to you today.
Okay, thanks.
So maybe at the next report, we can report back to council, Carl, on the fee and?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we'll, we'll collect some of that data and, and see how it lines up.
And we can see you now.
We can, you take up the whole screen now. I see your beautiful smile.
Your point is well taken, and, you know.
Yes, thank you.
Without, you know, wanting to ensure that the permit pays for the time.
Yeah, that was the intent.
So staff can provide that information.
Thank you.
Great. A council member, Martin?
Yes, two things. When we were deliberating on this ordinance, one, a couple of things were coming up about is there a way for us to determine, are we still having single owners? So we don't have a person on one, more than one, and being not adherents to the ordinance. And the second thing is, is do we know how many are owner occupied? That was another question, another big topic that we spoke about. I don't know if we have a way to know that information enough, but.
We have been tracking that with the permits. I don't have that data with me, though. Maybe Carl knows that figure.
Can you, is that something that, we're gonna start with that tomorrow, that we can just add?
And then that's important information.
So isn't that done on the application, though, where there's?
It's a whole house, or there's one room?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's either sixteen or seventeen of the approved ones are.
Most of them.
Either partial home or owner.
I was just thinking, if we put that date on it, that might be, because that was a discussion. Yeah, we can add that to the charter.
We can add it to, yeah.
Yeah, we'll add that in.
Great, thank you. Councilor Member?
Yes, two things. When we look at whether or not our fees are covering the cost to do the applications and collect the data, might want to remind ourselves that the first year we're doing this, costs are higher. Trying to get used to it, trying to learn that communications with Granicus, that kind of thing. So when we go to look at, is it being covered, keep in mind that I think those costs in the second. The other thing is, our former tourism director had a way of telling the visitors the city was shopping or eating in town via telephones. I don't know how it worked, I really didn't like the idea. But do we know that these people that run these houses, I assume occasionally they eat in a restaurant? And occasionally they shop, so it'd be nice to know that. Is that still overall economic impact to the city?
The chamber intends to take over our data fine account, which is the service that you're, that you're talking about. And so that is information that we could request from them as our new destination marketing organization, and we can report that.
Good. That means just internal knowledge.
Yeah. Thank you. Councilmember Liggins?
Yes, thank you. Do we know if any of the ones that are not permitted are boats? Because I know I've seen boats where they actually give a physical address. Does Granicus separate them out?
Yes, they do. They include the listings and pictures of everything, so they've gone through and separated those out. So those aren't included in any of these stats here. So these are just ones that would potentially meet the definition of short-term rental, as we have defined it.
Okay, great. And then remind me again how long our contract that we funded with Granicus is going to last? And if it will be long enough, or if we need to keep this up?
The contract is for one year.
One year, okay, thank you.
And would that expire then?
April.
It was nine thousand, is that what it was for?
Hmm, yes.
Somewhere.
And, and Jeremy, if, if I could add, I, wasn't the contract such that we would get the dashboard and the data one year from their initial report? Isn't that how that contract was set up? Or am I wrong?
I believe so. We need to confirm that.
Yeah, so I, I think we've got a little bit more time than when, from when we actually started the contract with them, I think. They, because they took a little bit of time to pull their report together, I don't think that time is counted essentially counted against us. That report was part of the, part of the overall fee. And then we were paying, as part of that fee, we were paying for the data. So when we renew with them, I think we're just paying for the data, so I think the cost is a little bit less. And I think it's one year from the point that we got the contract. We'll confirm with Granicus and just bring that back next time we bring a, bring our update.
Yeah, that'd be great when we're looking at the overall cost, especially to staff time, and if it's a useful piece that would take a lot of staff time, that we could consider extending it. So, okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilor Barber?
Yes, I just have a quick question. It said, you said that one of the permits has expired. Is, I didn't, is, what is the expiration time period on those permits, or is it?
So that would have been we had revisions requested, and they didn't respond within ninety days.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Great report.
Great report. Thank you so much. And looking forward to the additional information on the next report. Appreciate you doing that so much.
Do you think we could get a copy of that? Just your PowerPoint? Just in the agenda.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, we'll make sure that it's sent out, and it'll be linked in the.
Okay, thanks.
In the agenda, and.
Very nice, thank you.
We are, we are working on trying to ensure, we are working to ensure that these are provided ahead of time. So, thank you for, thank you for bringing that up, and your point is well taken.
Will he be reprimanded for that?
No, he's doing fabulous work.
That's such a good proposal.
No demerits or anything?
No, he's good. All right, thank you, council, and thank you again, Jeremy, thank you, Carl. Nice to have you back from vacation. Good to see your, your face is frozen right now.
Well, thank you anyway. Thank you, mayor.
Jeremy, what did you say to him?
Carl wants dessert.
Maybe, I don't know.
Okay, our last item is an interfund loan for Public Works Operations Center. I know it says David Rock, Finance Director. Oh, anyone here? Yay, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Oh, I understand you.
I think I have eyes in the back of my head, but I really don't, unless I turn around, I don't know. So great to have you, Dave. Thanks for being here to share this with us.
Oh, good afternoon, council, ma'am. This is an interfund loan for the Public Works Operations Center for the construction side of it. Years ago, kind of informally, in other words, when I say informally, council and staff, we had an understanding, we were going to fund this, the general fund side, parks and streets, through an interfund loan. We, we never did a resolution or anything like that, that's why I say a little bit informal. The site work was funded with an interfund loan, which is still outstanding, and, and the general fund has banned that down. And so now the construction is beginning, and the bills are starting to come in, we're needing some more money. And so this would authorize an interfund loan from the sewer capital fund to the, the street and parks fund, so they can pay their fair share of the costs of the Public Works Operations Center. The interest rate on the loan would be what we get at the local government pool, plus one percent. So it's a pretty good deal for the, the fund. And I believe the last one, we talked to our rate consultant, Ashley Emery, Ben's Financial Consulting. And I believe it was built in back then, and it is now. So in other words, the big timeline, you solve all the projects, there's not any projects being slid back because of this. And there certainly is no increase in rates because of this. This is simply just another way for this fund to invest idle funds. And so with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Uh, Councilor Henderson?
Thanks. So explain to me a little bit about an interfund loan and the interest being on it. We're, it seems to me, from just a lay point of view, we're taking money out of one pocket and putting it in the other and saying, oh, we're getting interest on it, but not getting interest on it. How?
What was it, that word?
Who's the actor?
We, we are getting interest in it, and there's a, a there's a state law, might even be a constitutional requirement that says no one fund shall benefit from another. So the way that works is the general fund can skew money out to any of the funds, but these other funds are business entities. And they have to get goods and services in return for their money. So, you know, so we can't take money from the sewer and use it for a general fund purpose.
Yeah, I'm just curious how, how that money from one pocket to the other earns interest.
We, we will charge it to it.
We, we, we invest idle funds, that, 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 we, we invest idle funds, let's say it's in the local government investment pool, and we get X percent for interest, rather than this money being in the pool, it'll be in our checking account, and we will pay bills with it. And then as revenues come into the general fund, the general fund will pay this down. So it's, it's essentially a transfer from the general fund to the, to the sewer, to the sewer fund to amortize the, the debt over ten years.
We can even more money, and we would have invested in the correct statement, so it's a.
It's a good deal for the sewer.
It's a sound investment.
Yes, it is. It's a very sound investment, and, and I don't know if I calculated on here the the amount. No, I didn't calculate an estimate on the interest, but it's significant. It's about three hundred and six thousand a year to the general fund, w- would be the payback. But it's a significant amount of interest to the sewer capital fund.
Great. Councilor Wood?
Hallelujah. Hallelujah, this building is a long time in coming.
I agree.
And I am so happy that it's happening for our, our group and our workers and Public Works and, and operations. It's a long time coming, and this is a great way to pay for it, and hallelujah.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. I want to thank Dave for looking at this mechanism. It's definitely a quicker way and a more cost-effective way to borrow money for these projects for our residents and our fiscal health. So I, I see that Councilmember Henderson may still have.
I'll chat with her.
You guys can connect later, okay? All right.
It is what you're saying, a one pocket to the other.
Well, okay.
Yeah. This is, we have to officially do this to stay on the good side of the state auditors.
Yeah.
Because they really do look at one fund benefiting from another.
Oh, I understand that fully. It's just, it sounds like we're getting money from somewhere else that wouldn't be coming into the city, like we put it in a bank and they're paying us extra money. It's not how this, the fund is earning interest, but it's taking, the, the interest is coming from another account, which is in the city.
Yes.
So it's not like we're getting extra money.
No.
The account is getting extra money, I get it, but not the city.
No.
Now, now, it's just terminology.
Yeah, it's all within under the umbrella of the sewer.
Correct, okay.
The pockets are getting bigger.
Okay, that's what I know.
Councilor Wood? Is there another way potentially to look at this, that if we had to go and borrow, which is what we're doing from one end to another, but we had to go borrow on the outside, we would be paying an interest rate on that loan, so this way at least we're paying our own interest rate.
Yes.
Rather than paying a third, third party.
That's right. Borrowing from your four oh one.
Yep, yep.
If you will.
Okay, well, it sounds like there is broad support for moving this forward, so thank you so much for this and for your creativity. Always appreciate.
Yeah, Carl's happy.
Am I still frozen on the screen? Oh, that's embarrassing.
Oh, it's not, it's not, okay, it's only like that in this room, apparently, Carl, so you're, you're, you're among friends, your, your large frozen face is a lot.
I see you, Carl. I see you.
Oh, good job, Jeremy. Yes, of course. City Administrator Keenison?
Thank you. Not still Jeff's thunder or Jennifer's thunder, but we received really good news today. The North Creek Salmon Heritage Site Phase Four Application to Conservation features for number three for all of Pierce County, and so we are going to be funded for Phase Four. Yeah, I'd like to. So I wanted to let you know that hot off the press. Thank you to Jeff and Jennifer for working that through, as well as the Great Peninsula Conservancy. They really took this on and worked through, as well as the Gatorland Conservation Fund, who will be putting forward the the ten percent match for this. So this is really conservation property that the city has only put a modest amount of staff time into and no actual funds. So it's really been pink for the city.
It's great.
Nice work.
Good job. Love it. Okay, I can't believe it's four oh nine, and if there is nothing else for the good of the order.
I'm going to return.
Or else, unless you almost want to stay here.
Oh, it's seven.
All those in favor say aye. Thank you, everybody.
Good job. Good discussion.